Lift your hands wherever your heart tonight, give him praise. Give him praise for his goodness, for his kindness, for his everlasting love. Father, we bless your name, we give you praise in the name of Jesus. Give you praise tonight, we bless your name, we worship your name, in the name of Jesus, we glorify your name. We bless you, oh God, we worship your name. Father, we bless you, we praise you, we give you praise. We give you praise, we give you praise, we give you praise. In the name of Jesus, church, why don't you go ahead, wherever you are tonight. Deliberately, from your hearts, genuinely, give him praise. I wake my soulless. Sing his praise, Allah. Sing his praise, Allah. I wake my soulless. Sing his praise, Allah. Sing his praise, Allah. I wake my soul, I wake my soulless. Sing his praise, Allah. Sing his praise, Allah. Sing, I wake my soul, I wake my soulless. Sing his praise, Allah. Sing his praise, Allah. For the last time, I wake my soul. Father, we bless you tonight, we give you praise. We give you praise tonight, in the name of Jesus. We give you praise tonight, thank you, our Father. Thank you, our Father. We give you praise. We give you praise. We give you praise, in the name of Jesus. We give you praise, in the name of Jesus. We give you praise, in the name of Jesus. Father, tonight. We approach you, we approach. Your throne as your people. We approach with discernment in our hearts. In the name of Jesus, we approach. The gathering of the saints tonight, we approach it with. Wisdom. In the name of Jesus, that the heights of our heart. Be illuminated, be enlightened, in the name of Jesus. We ask that you do a thorough work, complete what you have started in us. In the name of Jesus, unveil your mind, your purpose, your counsel, unveil to us thoroughly. And bring us to a point where we're in sync with what you are doing. In our time, in our moment, in Jesus' name. Amen and amen, please, you can have your seat, thank you very much. Welcome to church this evening, good evening. I like that the volume be brought down a little bit, it's sounding too. I'm guessing it's sounding too high, or maybe there's something here. Glory to Jesus, good evening, welcome in church. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Hallelujah. Welcome and welcome and welcome, for those tuned in online, welcome. To this service, before we start, I'd like you to. Help me do. Your friends, your neighbors, your loved ones, let me do them a favor tonight. By copying the link, for those of you online as well, copy the link of this service. Put it on your status. Share, if there are people you need to specialise, send reminders to, send reminders out. To people. Amen. Are we together? Yes, so. That is very important because of the nature of what we're about to. Get into. But we'll start us. John chapter thirteen and verse three. And what we're about to look into. I mean in that text, what you will find out is Jesus' um. Person is. Very nature. And one of the things that this passage. Reviews is the. You know. Way Jesus even used discernment. To deal in time. Are we together? One of the things you're going to see is how Jesus used. Discernment. In time, that is in, how he even interacted in time. In the broader spectrum, tonight, I'm going to be setting. The ball rolling for many of the things that would eventually become. The focal point at the forthcoming special meeting. That we're looking forward to, which is even what the midweek service has been centered around. How to prepare specially for special meetings. So that I can receive maximally, but in the very first place, what is there about a special meeting that is. Necessitating that I. Specially prepare for it, so I can receive maximally, what is even in need? That I am supposed to receive? Glory to Jesus. So. You're welcome. Are we together? So, like I said, I'm going to be setting the ball rolling. Hallelujah. For that experience. But even beyond that. Like I did mention, what is it that makes a special meeting? So special that we have to be attentive? I think one very close point that that just brings. Is actually. How that God works at different time. God's intentions packed into capsules of times. And now that. If there are intentions in the mind of God that has been packed. Into a time, it definitely means it is very important to take note of it. You see, one of the things that determines even how God does what he does, or. That can limit the Almighty. Or that can strengthen his plan. As seemingly limitless as the Almighty is, is time. Are you with me? You know, a rich man can actually be reaching billions, and he wants to have a skyscraper. But no matter how rich you are, the skyscraper needs time to surface. You can put billions on the table right now. But that cannot translate into anything. Except that thing has been produced already. So you can have hundreds of millions, and that will translate into a car, that car has been produced. But even before that car was produced, it needed time. Come on, are you with me tonight? Are you here tonight? Now, another intention that I, by the way, hope that we would be able to. Get into. Is the reality of cross pollination. When I make cross pollination, I mean the duality of civilization. Are you with me tonight? Do you actually realise that it was at the point when. What do they call them, the Socrates, the philosophers? Do you actually know that it was at their time? That the idea of separating between realms. The ethereal and the empirical, do you actually know was at their time? That it became separated, distanced? Are you following what I'm saying? Men from medieval times. Understand. That both the ethereal, invincible world. And the physical, material world. At a point you can't, they work together, they are in synchrony. There's a parallel. That cuts across them. And unless we have that first of all, established in our mind. Every other thing that you talk about, in terms of God's agenda, plans, packaging capsules of time. It will make no meaning, it will have no essence, what gives time? The prominence as a factor that even determines what has been set in eternity, what gives it prominence? Is the reality of the duality of civilization. Hallelujah. How do I mean? How do you explain this to me? Bible described them as wise men. He said they were going on their own, and all of a sudden they saw a star in the sky. How? By what knowledge do you get to understand? That a star appearing in the sky is a symbol of an event on the earth? What school did you learn that from? That a star appearing in the sky is a symbol that an event on the earth? Has been initiated, how? Who told you, who taught you? Duality of realms. Are you following what I'm saying? Duality of civilization, as a matter of fact, the men of those times. They were more schooled in the civilization of the ethereal realm. And by that understanding, they were, they were able to use it to pave way in this material realm. I get what I'm saying? How do you explain it? When the wise men go to the palace. And they said, oh, King, live forever, we have come to see the king that has been born. And the king being shocked said, well, I don't know about any other king, as far as I know, I'm the king. But let me put that aside for a moment. Wise men too. Sorceress. Where is the king, Messiah, that was, where is he supposed to be born? And they told him, in Bethlehem of Judea. Excuse me again, by what knowledge? Were they able to trap? A newborn? You get what I'm saying? I'm saying that look at how they are dealing in time with a divinely sourced information. How many of you have watched, uh, was that, Merlin? Are you getting the point? What civilization does Merlin use, and he will say. Call whatever it calls, a door locked will be opened. Are you getting what I'm saying? By what civilization? Amen. Can I go a bit further? Bible says in Genesis chapter six, it says, sons of God came down to the earth. And they met with the children of men, are you with me? Met with the daughters of men. And they, when he said met, he's talking about intercourse with them. And then giants were born, the Bible says, these were the generation of the sons of Anakim. Oh, so now. Indeed, there is duality of realm, men from another world, meeting with men from the physical world. And you know, one of the reasons for the biggest struggle of men in time is that they tried to deal only by the philosophies and principles from time. But you need to go back and understand how the men who first treaded the world you are living in, how they operated. Your forefathers, our great ancestors, both in the faith and even in the flesh. Are you following what I'm saying? Have you seen men that for some reason, maybe they are having a very important event, it looks cloudy, and then they say, give us some time, we are coming. By the time they come back outside, what you saw in the sky has disappeared. Duality of realms. And so, the point is that if there is no such reality, we cannot find an evidence to substantiate the duality of realm. We should not even talk about the agenda of God that is packaged in times, meant for different times. The purposes of God packing, it is not relevant. Hallelujah. Look at John thirteen, verse three. Oh, thank you, Lord Jesus. Look at what the Bible says, Jesus knowing that the father had given all things into his hands. And I was come from God. And went to God. I mean, look at one verse, like they say, one child like one million, look at one verse with millions of points. Are you getting what I'm saying? The Bible starts in, said, Jesus knowing that the father had given all things into his hand. I need you to deal first, from a philosophical standpoint, with that verse. Jesus knowing that the father had given all things into his hand, excuse me, the government of that generation of that time does not understand what you mean by father. Now, what do you mean that someone from somewhere has handed all things into your hands? Are you following what I'm saying? Is this Caesar, who is that father that is handing all things, so you have a consciousness of authority, but the person you are claiming gave you the authority cannot be seen. And yet you are confident that that authority is binding. Jesus knowing that the father had given all things into his hands, look at how we operated from eternity. Are you getting what I'm saying? Oh my goodness. Then he went further, and that he was come from God. Hallelujah. And went to God. Glory to Jesus. He rises from supper and laid aside his garments. And took it away and gathered himself, hallelujah. Are we together? So, that Bible passage gives us an understanding. Jesus knowing that the father had given all things into his hands, and I was come from God and went to God, there's another passage I'm trying to look for, if I get that. The Bible describing Jesus in that place says, he knew that his time had come. Matthew, is that Matthew, Luke nineteen, I beg your pardon. Luke chapter nineteen. Oh, thank you, Lord Jesus. Sorry, Luke chapter nineteen, are you there? Uh. Okay. Verse forty-one. Are you Luke chapter nineteen, verse forty-one? And when he was come here, he beled the city. And wept over it. Saying, if thou has known, even thou at least, the point I'm trying to call our attention to. Of the word, is that word, know, that we saw in John thirteen three, Jesus knowing, what, what form of knowing is that that he's referring to? You get what I'm saying? So John thirteen told us that Jesus knowing, this is not talking about the knowing of. Noses, this is not sensory knowledge. This is talking about knowledge by revelation. Knowledge by discernment. Are you with me, gynosco? Are you following what I'm saying? So he says the same thing again, if you have known, even thou at least, in this day, the things which belong unto thy peace. How? But now they are hid from thy eyes. Excuse me, is he referring to people that their eyes are entirely blind? If thou has known, Jesus uses that same word again, John chapter four. Hallelujah. John four, verse ten. Are you there? Jesus answered and said unto her, if thou knewest the gift of God. And who it is that saith to thee, give me to drink, thou wouldst have asked him of him, thou would have asked of him, and he would have given thee living water. A woman that you have been discussing with. That can see you. That you said you are thirsty, she should give you water. Then you went at to say, if thou knewest the gift of God, and if you knew. So Jesus by that verse says that optical eyes is not enough to tell us that you know this kind of thing he's talking about. He says, if thou knewest the gift of God. And who it is that says, so Jesus is saying that you woman can see me, but you don't know me. Come on, are you with me? He says, you can see, but you don't know. So Jesus is referring to another kind of knowledge, another knowledge that, a knowledge that comes by inward disclosure. Revelation. Hallelujah. Remember where Jesus in Matthew sixteen asks his disciples, whom do you, whom do people say that I am? They said, some say thou are John the Baptist, others said Elijah, or one of the prophets. Then Jesus went on to say, whom do you say that I am? Then Jesus went on to say. Peter said, you are the Christ, the son of the living God. And all of that, I guess what I'm saying. Then Jesus went on to reply Peter and said, flesh and blood has not revealed, so. This knowledge that you have of me that is different from what other think about me, it didn't come by flesh and blood. When others look at the same man, they see John, or it could be Elijah, or Jeremiah, or one of the prophets, the same man. Jesus asked one of the disciples, he said, whom do you say that I am? Then that one replies and said, you are the Christ. You know, to have referred to him as one of the prophets is even a great honour already. Come on, are you following what I'm saying? So let me nail the point together. Ephesians chapter three. With everything. We will shine for your glory. With everything. Thank you, Lord. Ephesians chapter three from verse one, please pay attention. For this goes high Paul, the priest of Jesus Christ for you Gentiles. Verse two. If you have heard. Of the dispensation of the grace of God. Which is given to me to you, world. Pay attention to some key words there. Hallelujah. Jesus say, I mean, sorry, Paul here is writing. High Paul, the priest of Jesus Christ for you Gentiles, if you have heard. Of the dispensation of the grace of God which is given to me to you, world, in other words, high Paul, by the grace of God, I've been made an apostle, however, for you. But the point exactly is what Paul is driving home, he says, what God has made me is not what matters, is if you can see it. Pay attention, if you have heard of the dispensation of the grace of God which is given to me to you, world, in other words, if you understand. Are you following what I'm saying? So, the first point I'm trying to establish there. Two schools of knowledge. Two frames of reality. Jesus had been telling people all along, if you knew, if you knew, or Jesus himself knowing, are you getting the point? If you knew, but they can't see, Paul is also here saying the same thing, if you know. What, are you getting what I'm saying, if you know what has been given to me for you, now that's where we start tonight. And the starting point is really. The workings of God. You need to understand, or rather, you need to know, and you, you get the knowing we are talking about now, is not knowing by the senses. Is knowing, a inward disclosure, a realisation. I get the point, a consciousness. That at every point, I'm only into the message, oh, at every point where men have cried to God. God, the earth is not how it's supposed to be. God, they are the elders in bondage, God, ah. We cannot survive. This, this hardship, this situation, ah. You need to understand that every prayer, men have ever prayed to God, to see God come into the situation, God has always responded by men. That may not yet be a realisation in you yet. That was why we started from, I mean to say, every time in every age, when men have cried to God. God. We can't go on like this. Is either you reveal yourself, or something else happens. I mean to say that every of those prayer, God in his best strength. Has always responded, even Christ came as a man. Come on, are you here? Are you sure you are here? You see, once we are able to establish that, oh, then our team for the conference becomes relevant, generations. Are you with me? Then our point, the message, then it becomes important. You need to understand Exodus chapter, um, turn to Exodus. Hallelujah. Exodus chapter three. Oh, hallelujah. Exodus chapter three, I just want to take you on a very short. Exposee. What I'm saying is this, if you understand. The body of thoughts in the message or the emphasis that God is making in this season, which is actually going to, it is climax, when we eventually come together at that special meeting. You understand that your prayer about your business, this is how God answers it. I'm saying that your prayer about your big breakthrough, and this is how it comes. I'm saying that what you are expecting God to do, that will make you the most relevant man you have always looked forward to, it is one gap away from God raising a man. Hallelujah. And maybe another man praying somewhere, his answer is at the mercy of you being raised by God. Are you here? Now Moses kept the flock of Jethro, his father-in-law. The priest of Midian. And he led the flock to the backside of the desert. And came to the mountain of God, even to Horeb. And the angel of the Lord appeared unto him in the flame of fire out of the midst of a bush. And he looked and behold, the bush burnt with fire, and the bush was not consumed. And Moses said, I will now turn aside and see this great sight, you remember that now, the burning bush? Okay, why the bush is not burnt? And when the lost one died, turned aside to see, God called unto him out of the midst of the bush, and said, Moses, Moses, and he said, here am I. And said, draw not nigh either, put off thy shoes from. Put off thy shoes from off thy feet, for the place whereon thou standest is holy ground. Moreover, he said, I am the God of thy father, the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, the God of Jacob. And Moses, in his face, for he was afraid, to look upon God. And the Lord said, this is where I'm taking you to. And the Lord said, I have surely seen the affliction of my people which are in Egypt, and have heard their cry by reason of their taskmasters, for I know their sorrows. And I am come down to deliver them out of the hand of the Egyptians, and to bring them up out of that land unto a good land, and a large, unto a land flowing with milk and honey, unto the place of the Canaanites, and the Hyvites, and the Amorites, and the Perizzites, and the Yvites, and the Jibites. Are you following? Now, therefore, behold, the cry of the children of Israel is come unto me. Is that in your Bible? And I have also seen the oppression. Where will the Egyptians oppress them? Come now, therefore, and I will send thee. Are you with me? Maybe the problem is that you didn't understand the communication. God started in verse seven and said, I have seen the affliction of my people, and I have heard their cry. I know their sorrows. I have come to deliver them. I thought God will go. He has come to answer their prayer. I expected him to go. Then he consumates it. Verse nine. Now, therefore, the cry of the children of Israel is come unto me. I have seen their oppression. Where will the Egyptians oppress them? Come now, therefore, everything I am going to do, you will go and do it. All the prayers they have prayed, the raising of a voice to God in, oh, ah, who will deliver us now? Almighty God, come and deliver us. Are you with me? God said, yes. I have heard your cry. I have seen your sorrow. I am come to deliver you. But this is how I'm going to deliver you. Come and go. If that was done, and that was the only time we ever saw that that way, then we should not be able to conclude that that's how God works. Amen. Turn your Bibles to another passage. Judges, chapter number seven. Oh, hallelujah. Judges, chapter six. Lay brother, gather all the manly. Hallelujah. Are you in Judges, chapter six? Are you there? Verse eleven. And here came an angel of the Lord and sat on an oak which is an offer that pertained unto Joash the Abias right, and his son Gideon, threshed with by the winepress, to hide it from the Midianites. Verse twelve. And the angel of the Lord appeared unto him and said unto him, the Lord is with thee, thou mighty man of valor. Are you with me? Look at Gideon's response in verse thirteen. And Gideon said unto him, O my Lord, if the Lord be with us, why then is all this befalling us? And where be all his miracles, which our fathers told us of, saying, did not the Lord bring us out from Egypt? But now the Lord hath forsaken us and delivered us into the hand of the Midianites. This is Gideon speaking. Is that correct? Look at the angel's response in verse fourteen. And the Lord looked upon him and said, go in this thy mind, and thou shall save Israel. Sometimes deliverers are the ones crying that there is no deliverance. Sometimes deliverers that everybody is crying to God for help, and they are in their equation of people crying to God for help, and God is looking down from heaven, but you are the deliverer. He joined them. I mean, you read it. He said, if God be with us, where be all his mighty acts? So that tells us again, if actually the people of his day, if they had this knowing that we discuss, all the while when they were crying, they would have just said, God, put it in Gideon's act to rise. Are you getting what I'm saying? So actually, what people can be waiting for, for a decade, can be till a baby that has just born grows to full age. So in the mind of God, when Moses, that young baby, was born, just give him eighty years' time, your deliverance will come. So two generations can wait for deliverance, and all they are waiting for is for a child to become of age. A generation has been captured to be in forty years, thirty to forty years. So people can wait for two generations, trusting that someday the consolation of Israel will come, and what they are waiting for is for men to rise. Can you see where time also now comes back into the equation? Agendas can be packaged in capsules of time. I'm not talking to the right audience tonight. Okay, maybe we should discuss the ark of Noah. I think that's what you are interested in tonight, right? I'm, I'm disclosing to you forces that rule the world. Forces, these are the forces that move the world. Are you getting what I'm saying? Look at Gideon. Gideon is here saying, eh, what are you telling me? If God is with us, where be all his mighty works? And the angel looking from his superior intelligence is now telling him, if only you knew yourself. If only you knew who you are. If only you know that the dispensation you are crying that God should come and help you people through. If only you knew you were the aim of a fierce of things that by the authority and the verity of heaven, it has been handed to you. I'm not here to excite you. That's not my business tonight. You've, you've, you've been excited. I'm disclosing what is real to you, that from heaven they decide, this guy has done it long enough. He's another person's time. Are you with me? Hey. Okay, how about that? Oh, my goodness. You know, we started last week by saying that sometimes it's not just that the purpose of a thing, when it is not known, abuse is inevitable. All right? Are you following what I'm saying? Are we good? Is everything okay there? Is everything okay there? Eh? What's going on? What's wrong with the network? Which of the networks are we on? Eh? Phone or MiFi? Sorry? Which is not bringing network at all? What's wrong with it? Did you turn it on? It's not bringing network at all. Hallelujah. Let's just go on. I believe that, every other thing will catch up with us. Please, are you following? Okay, I wanted us to turn to a passage, and I was saying that last week we started by establishing that when the purpose of a thing is not known, abuse is inevitable. But I'm seeing that in some instances, it's not abuse. It is under use. Are you getting what I'm saying? Now, part of that is what I'm disclosing. That when you don't know, that it's not only on earth that there is such thing by, what do they call them? Kingmakers. It's not only on earth that we have kingmakers that say this one has ruled for four years, that one has ruled for four years, and that one has ruled for four years. Okay, you, you are local. Are you hearing what I'm saying? No, it's not on earth only. Anything you see on earth is a forgery of what is real. Oh, my goodness. Are you with me? I'll flow with your tide. Whatsoever you demand, I will supply. You get what I'm saying? What you demand, I will supply. Psalm one forty-five. Hallelujah. Have you read this other passage before? I'm just still trying to drum in, you know, the bell of duality of realms. Because you see, I'm making an emphasis that if that thing is not valid, we have no business exploring an agenda that is packed for a time. If that is not real, there is no point. In the very first place, who is the he that is packaging an agenda in time? Since an ethereal realm, anything that is invisible and we cannot see or touch, since it is not real, then there is nobody packaging an agenda that we're exploring. That's the meaning. Are you following what I'm saying? Have you read this before? A man by the name King David wants to fight a war. Amen. Wants to fight a war. And then he goes and says, Lord, should I pursue? Will I surely overtake? Will I recover? I thought that was a war. Who draws strategy from an invisible realm? You want to fight a battle. I thought you were supposed to arrange your men according to their strength and go fight. I told you, medieval times know that there is such thing as duality of realms. Men from medieval times, they know. Have you heard this before? Have you read it in your Bible? A woman by the name Deborah was going to fight a war. The sun and stars, they fought. The moon and stars, they fought for her. Oh, my goodness. I'm not talking to you right now tonight. The moon and stars fought. Have you read this before in your Bible? A man by the name Joshua led a battle. He got to a time, the night was setting on them. And this man knew that if it gets dark and we remain in this battle, they will win us. And so he commands the sun, so stand thou still in the valley of high Jalon. Says, so stand thou still in the valley of high Jalon. Stay there till we are done fighting this battle. So men from medieval times know how to initiate processes from the ethereal realm to their favor in this physical realm. Hallelujah. Psalm one forty-five. Verse three. Oh, hallelujah. Psalm one forty-five, verse three. Great is the Lord, and greatly to be praised, and his greatness is unsatiable. Verse four. One generation shall praise thy works to another, and shall declare thy mighty acts glory to Jesus. Hallelujah. One generation shall praise. So if we have ever seen men who understood function by and took a leverage out of the duality of realms, then that text we just read, all right, tells us God wants to present himself as the God that is the same yesterday, as the same that is today and forever, so that the generations, what I've seen is wonders in times past, another generation can recreate it. Hallelujah. I'll also go through that text again. One generation shall praise thy works. Why are they praising thy works? Because his excellent greatness is still being seen. What was heard about in times past, like Gideon said, another generation is reproducing it, is recreating it. And how did those men, how did they do it? Duality. They understood how to function by. So Gideon can look. He understands that there is a science to tell the day to be longer. Come on, are you with me? He understood that there is a place, even in all the equation of science, where you can tell the day be longer. Be longer. Today, when we have longer day, shorter night, it looks like a big thing to us. Longer day, shorter night, it is a big deal to us. In some part of the world, they will tell you by nine P M. Some people that I've talked to, they've told me, nine P M, the day is still quite bright. You can see your neighbor's roof. Hallelujah. There may be one of such phenomena. Are you with me? That we have been trying to also, you know, communicate, and with which God, you know, continues his work. I've talked about men, right? Right? That one of men, if you like, know. If you like, don't know. It is forever a pattern. Are you with me? Now, maybe another phenomena, in fact, not maybe, one of the other one. Amen. Is seasons. Seasons. You see, the moment we juxtapose these two together, then we can understand why certain times can be special. The moment we accept and acknowledge the reality of the duality of civilization. Are you with me? And then we also understand the role of seasons. Then we can know that certain times can be special. Are you following what I'm saying? First of all, let me try and set a background as a precursor to that. Are you aware? Amen? Talking about things being special. Are you aware, King Solomon, in that popular passage where they go and go fill the temple? Amen? Are you aware Solomon said that God, this temple, whenever they pray to you, from this temple facing the direction of the sun, hear them. Are you getting what I'm saying? Whenever they pray to, so you see a man, a Jewish man, praying, and he knows that so long as I can face this direction, answer will come. Have you seen your fellow compatriots on earth that do that? So now you are looking for God. If the Bible says Jesus is the only way, the truth, and the life, why do some other people pray to you, following certain practice, and they are getting answer? I just showed you. Oh, my goodness. Are you getting what I'm saying? Hallelujah. Are you with me? Seasons. So let's go into that now. Habakkuk, chapter one. Let's start from Habakkuk. Oh, hallelujah. Habakkuk, chapter one, verse five. My goodness. Be ye among the heathen and regard and wonder marvelously. For I will walk a walk in your days, which you will not believe, though it be told you. Hallelujah. Behold, among the heathen and regard, and wonder marvelously. For I will walk a walk in your days, which you will not believe, though it be told you. Verse six. For lo, I raise up the childians, that bitter and estination, which are marked through the breath of the land, to possess the dwelling places that are not theirs. So he says, I'm doing a work, a work that will be marvelous in your days, which you will not believe, even if you were told. But what is that work? I am raising the childians. He's raising a people. What are they going to do? They will possess the dwelling places that are not theirs. So a season is coming. According to this prophetic declaration, some people will be raised. See the constellation of the According to this prophetic declaration, some people will be raised. See the constellation of the two things we have talked about, forces of season, forces of a people. Are you with me? "I will walk a walk in your day," that brings time into the equation. A work which you will not believe, though it be told you, that tells you that that work is not for now. It is a work set within the boundary of a prophetic time. Set for a Kairos moment. Which you will not believe, though it be told you. Then he says, "I will raise up the childians, that bitter and estimation." Are you following? Why is he referring to the childians? This is Habakkuk, a prophet of God. He's supposed to be speaking to the children of Israel. Are you following? This is where God becomes tight cornered. When the people he's supposed to work with cannot discern what he's about to do, or they are stiff naked, he will work with the people you think to be less qualified. Are you following what I'm saying? When the people who are supposed, you know, the people who probably will claim they're rightful owners. In this case, the Jews are supposed to be the rightful owners. They are supposed to be the qualified. They are supposed to be who would take pride in the fact that we are the people of God. We are the ones that, you know, God have a covenant relationship with. However, by way of pattern, over time, they are neither here nor there. Are you following? Moses had told him at different times, he said, "If you want to serve the Lord, choose ye." Choose ye this day. Joshua told them too. Choose ye this day whom ye shall serve. Then he says, "As for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." Amen. And so it got to a point, they had to be told, "Look at this. This plan has gone beyond you." "Now I am opening the borders." Childians, this is Gentiles. Are you following? Do you know that it is part of this prophetic agenda that made us the Gentiles largely, that made us engrafted into the promise of salvation? Amen. Seasons. Ecclesiastes chapter 3. Ecclesiastes 3, verse 1. "To everything there is a season and a time to every purpose under the heaven." Are we together? So can you see where time can be a capsule that is holding a plan? Oh, am I talking to the right people tonight? "To everything there is a season and a time allotted to every purpose under the heaven." So time now goes beyond 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. You know, it is only in the flesh alone, in fact, in the Western civilization alone, that we know time as chronos. We call it chronological time. In the other civilization, like we are set in motion, I told you, they also have their civilization. Time is not chronological. Time is moments. Time is events, moments of moments. Fullness of time, the Bible calls it. Moments where an agenda is ripe. Moment when a plan is ripe, they call it Kairos. Oh, then if there is such reality, that there are times holding certain agenda, fulfillment of certain plan, then time can be special. Ah, then days and moments can be special. Then times can be different from times. If that is valid, ah, then days can be different from days. Are you following what I'm saying? The Bible is speaking. It said, "When the fullness of time must come, God sent forth his son, born of a woman, born under the law, to deliver them that are with, that are under the law, that will receive the adoption of sunshine." I want you to listen and hear me well. Are you with me? Have you realized that even in the history of the world, listen carefully to me, time is the determinant of the making of man? I'm not talking about the process. I'm talking about the emergence of man. Did you realize how come, look at it, if he only made one man, then we can say he's a fluke? How come all the men who could see the internet age coming and position for him, all of them are billionaires today? How come? How come? Jeff Bezos, he saw a time where commerce can be taken to the internet. And said, "You know what? Everybody, let's reposition. Take this thing from looking for shop, look for developers that will build you a website, that is the time we are entering, and bring products, host it on a platform." A lover said a time came, he was asking people for money to build a platform where people can buy online. They told him, "You are stupid." But men are made in times, because when they can see like a bird that has positioned his wings for a wind that is coming, that wind lifts them. In that time, Bill Gates, all of them, they said, "We see a time when computers can be on the table of every home in the world." Time. Time. This guy saw it. Said, "There is something about the era that is ahead." There is something about it. So that brings another thing into the equation. Seasons are special, and that's very beautiful, but they can also be men who are gifted in discerning times. And when all of those, when they meet together. I get what I'm saying? When all of those, when they intersect, you see an explosive force. Hallelujah. I think it changes already, the battery is already out. Hallelujah. Are you following what I'm saying? Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Are we together? Are we together? You see, one very big thing I just want to, uh, get you to see played with you on, amen? Especially for some of us that have a good heart for a message that touches the heart. I get what I'm saying? Some of us have a very soft spot for a message that touches the, you know, on Sunday, we're doing doctrine, you know, so. No, it does not touch the heart. It's your brain that you're engaging, like Bible study. But sometimes, you know, some of us have a very soft spot for a message. Oh. Yes, yes, yes. Bringing on the spirit of God is touching my heart, yes. I want to let you know that the goal is not to get the message to touch your hearts. Because it can touch your heart and you miss the point. I get what I'm saying? He can touch your heart and yet you miss the point. Because many times, sometimes the intention of a preacher is misconstrued. He just wants to get us excited. He feels cool when he tells us those things. And yes, sometimes you are preaching yourself happy. Oh, very true. Sometimes you are preaching the roof off. And you're like, "Yes, I like this feeling as I'm blowing the roof open." But please, get the point. Are you following what I'm saying? Amen. Are you with me? Are you sure? What I'm basically doing is showing you by precepts and by example in the Bible, some things that forces, factors that leads to, you know, the emergence, the, the making of man. I wonder if you have ever wondered how men took. Have you ever tried to imagine, how did Elon Musk, if that's the kind of person you like to think about? Have you ever, how, how did Elon Musk, you know, they used to talk about dream, dream, I mean now, dream, dream big. Like, have you ever thought about how did he think of himself to that point? Now, is, are you not a human being too? Have you not tried to dream sometimes? I'm going to get the face you're like. What, 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 what else? You, you know? So that tells you a thing. It is true, everybody can dream, but there is something called boundaries of the art. Where you cannot think beyond what is real to you. Now, if it is left to us to dream, and there is also a reality called boundaries of life, we should not go beyond what our heart can occupy. Oh, but there's such a thing, as a reality, a civilization from this other world that can come on a man. Gideon did not think of himself to become bigger. Realize, he did not say, "You know, one day, I can dream, I think, I feel, I aspire to aspire, one day, everybody will think of me, they go, Allah my name one day." Gideon did not do that. I hear what I'm saying? Because Gideon has accepted NFA, no future ambition. Moses was cool. What's the guy? Bororo? Malam? What's he doing? Katu, hey, hey, headsway. He, he saw no future of becoming a man that his name will be written in the signs of time. I'm trying to get you to see that they've told you a lot of things in the Western civilization, dream, dreamo, dream, dreamo. The people that have reigned on this earth, they didn't try to dream. David, backside of the forest. I hear what I'm saying? He was just there. Now, that is exactly where we are going now. Okay, wait. This thing that seemed to look scattered in his expression, that led to how some people just boom, just shut out of nowhere like that. I mean, have you read the introduction of, um, of Elijah? What do they conduct him in meetings when they are reading a man's, eh, citation? I mean, don't you see Elijah's citation? The Bible just started. And now Elijah the teacher, out of nowhere, that guy just came out. And now Elijah the teacher. Out of nowhere. So what's this thing that just seemed to look scattered? And that was responsible for how some men just. Is there a logic to it? Can it be investigated? To the point that once I trap it, I can use it? I've taught a message before, the equation of coincidence. Hey, can, can we find the equation that bet this coincidence that led to, you know, they asked Bill Gates, Bill Gates explained to us, "What is the secret of your rising?" He said, "The only secret I know was that I was at the right place, at the right time, and they shared the right information with me." Can I surprise you? Because I've read the story, that it was not only Bill Gates who was trying to move the idea, the innovation of computer at that time. He had a friend, in fact, two friends, that the guy that later became his right hand man in Microsoft. There were guys better than Bill Gates. So it's really not that it was only Bill Gates that had this idea of a better world in his generation. Bill Gates had, so to speak, competitors who were better than him, in fact, who had better investors. I've, I've read the story. So if you probably have seen a picture of Microsoft Bill Gates that emerged because he had no threats, he had no opposition, you read the wrong story. If you read the story like he was just a full-blown potential, he had always had the potential. Yes, he had always had the potential, but he had people which if, quote unquote, like they call it, the universe had not worked in his favor, there will be the name, Bill Gates will be like all the jagga jagga boys in tech that we know today. Are you hearing what I'm saying? Are you guessing what I'm saying? Let me re-echo myself. If you have ever swallowed a story that told you that Bill Gates had always been good from when he was born till the time he emerged, and that that was the force that was responsible for him to rise, you are wrong. There were guys better. So the question then is, what is that force that worked, that tilted a generation into the hands of Bill Gates? What was that thing that worked? That tilted it. I re-echo it again. I said, "There were guys better than him." If they were ranking, maybe it would be like number 2 or number 3. So there was a number 1, there was a guy. What happened to that guy? He died. Oh, so there's such a thing that works in such a way that, uh, uh, the way the generation is meant to, and in the, is, is supposed to land on. Are you following what I'm saying? The generation is supposed to land on this guy, but there are people, giants, ha, Anakim's on the way. But God will say, "I said, this force is stronger than giants." You see, if you don't investigate this and find this, giants will keep scaring you. Oh. If you don't investigate this thing we are talking about and trap it, giants will keep. Look at it now, giants were alive, but the generation were, look at it now, they didn't call David first, they called his brothers. They were the ones that even Samuel said, "Ah, the Lord has no to stand before him." Perhaps David was in that equation lining up. If they say, "Who is going to win?", David himself would have concluded. The prophet said, "A prophet looked at a man and said, 'The Lord.'" So a prophet can even be wrong. They can look at the people and say, "Out of all these people, who, who, who do you think the, the, the generation is supposed to listen to?" Say, "Ah, look at that one." Eh, what's his name? Brian Houston said, "If you know me, from when I was born, I was the least likely to emerge." He said, "I was on Azumi, I've read this book." There is more. That's the title, "There is more." You get the point? He said, "I was the least likely." So I'm saying that what is this thing that men who look on Azumi can catch? And the men, the world is even thinking that they are the ones that will deliver. Yet, the on Azumi will outrun them. And I'm saying that perhaps you don't know, I am saying there is such a thing that on Azumi men can catch. The ones others think are going to catch something, there will be nowhere. There is such. Amen. Oh, glory, glory, glory. Oh, then if, in fact, I can't even go any, any, but I can, I can try. Then if all these are real, then there are things to look forward to in a special meeting. If all these are real. Then indeed, there are things to look forward to in a special meeting. Are you following what I'm saying? Then indeed, there are things to look forward to. Because we have seen and we have understood. That the only civilization existing is not Western. No, that's what we, we have seen it. That the only civilization that exists is not only Western. That our civilization doesn't only come from Silicon Valley. Are you following what I'm saying? That our civilization doesn't only come from Wall Street. You get what I'm saying? That our civilization, it doesn't only come from Hollywood. When the media is tilted in your favor. When a street of money is tilted in your favor. Oh, then if that is real. Then there are things to look forward. Because all those people we are making reference to. Indeed, what civilization? For example. David's life changed by what? An encounter with Samuel. Just bam, change. Are you following what I'm saying? I think it was, yes, this morning, I was meditating. And I was looking at the dates for this event. Twenty eighth to thirty first. And I remember last year, Pastor over. Immediately we're done, you said to me, pastor, let's fix the date for next year, twenty eighth to thirty first. And somewhat like a coincidence. Somewhere along the line when we're deciding. We decided it was going to be twenty eighth to thirty first. I'm not trying to make any point out of anything, are you get what I'm saying? And at that point, I sat down and I said. The prophetic is real. For me, when we're deciding on that time. It seemed like our logic was all we're using. But there is such a force which when it has been set in motion. When later your logic is working, that force is so strong, it will tailor your logic. Ha! You are logical, you have a will. But that force is so strong, it can tailor your will. Ha! My goodness. So what if the same is true when we come for a special meeting? That in the course of the rest of the time. We can all go, what we are applying is natural force now. We are going to, you know, eat the street again. But a force, something can be initiated. That will make every other, you know, like the story of Joseph. The sheaves will now be bowing in your direction. Are you get what I'm saying? Everybody will be bringing their ships aboard. The, the force that has been set in motion will make all the forces of cosmos bend in your direction. One, pardon the word, one foolish young man. Said, forget it. Prophecies, all those prophecy prophetic nonsense is fake. It's fake, it's just to excite. Said, eh? Go and prophesy to somebody now, tell him he will move from here. Whether he will go from here to Lockoja. Shabbi prophecy is just to program people's mind. Then go and tell a madman, you will move from here, you will get to Abuja. And see, in the mad mouth remove, whether he will even reach Lockoja. Are you following? That's one message preached by Cornel Moyo. He saw one of his young men. This guy came into one of their meetings. He was Zariah. Came into the meeting, the prophet said, well, the guy got bored again and then he came to see him after they said this. And says, sir, I gave my, I, I gave my life to Christ, and that's the language they know there. I gave my life to Christ in this meeting. And he looked at me, wow! That's the big deal, oh. That's the big deal. When a man gives his act to Christ, that's the, that's the big deal. It's not like that's the small, then come, let's teach you the major ropes now. So that's the big deal. Started following him, started continuing following him and all of that. And the, the interesting thing was that, when the guy came into that meeting. The prophet said, at first. He thought, he was one of the people that used to wash clothes for students, you know, those days. They used to go into hotels and say, if you want to wash your clothes. If you have gone to NYSE camp before, you know that they use to help people wash clothes. I said, no, I mean, students, yeah, you kept listening. From the person they are thinking, he used to help people wash clothes. Somewhere along this line, he picked the line of interest, IT. I mean, internet technology or information technology. From there, this guy said, sir, there's a competition with entries from all around the world. He said, eh, eh, ah, say, put in now, don't worry. Put in. Then he put in, not motivation, not just encouragement, the prophet spoke what to find. Entries from all around the world. They picked his own from Nigeria. He said, sir, they are now calling us to Washington, once we scale this national stage. The next thing. The prophet said. When they release the results. Entries from all around the world. Over one hundred nations. This boy said, he was the, I mean, the prophet said, he was the first person he called. This guy said, sir, they have called me, I'm going to Washington. And then the guy go to Washington, took picture. Yeah, yes, this is life. Our person is on Facebook, this is life. Now. I said that because of, you know, statement like, forget that thing, prophecy is not true, it's just to condition people's mind. Now, was that mental conditioning? A guy that obviously was an NFA. I have the guy's book now, Menne Blessing, his book is in my, is in my shelf, Menne. The last time, eh? He collected grant from Mark Zuckerberg. Maybe about 1.2 million dollars or 12 million dollars, I can't remember. In fact, that's exactly what he does now, he asks people to write grants. And win massive grants. Are you following what I'm saying? And then on and on and on and on like that. Glory to Jesus. See, the major point has already been said. Hallelujah. That God packages his plans, his agendas into seasons and times. And there is such a reality that men, you know, like the wise men. They can discern, there is something about this star. Wise men can discern, they say, forget it. Times are times, but there is something about this time. Days are days, boy, eh, there is something about this one. The Bible speaking about the children of Israel, chapter 12, verse 32. Said, the men of Israel were met with understanding of times and of seasons. They can understand times. Glory to Jesus. So what happens when people do not understand times? Just look at something, Jeremiah chapter seventeen. Hallelujah. Because the same rain. Amen. The same rain that falls and, you know. Is what meets the need of one. Is the same that spores the car of one. Amen. Look at this, Jeremiah seventeen, verse five. Thus saith the Lord. Cause be the man that trusted in man. And make it flesh is harm. Whose heart departs from the Lord. Now, many of the time, that is usually the part we just, oh, cause be the man that make man, that trust in the arm of flesh. Hallelujah. But he didn't stop there, he went on to describe something further in verse six. For he shall be like the heath in the desert. And shall not see when good comes. So this is the description of a kind of man. First of all, yes, we know, he make it arm of flesh is strength. Obviously, he's already explaining it. These kind of people, they have no understanding of spiritual things. Everything they know is arm of flesh. Are you getting the point? Are you get what I'm saying? But then, what is the description of that man? He explains it in verses. It is not that good will not come to him, he will not see it. So actually, there can be people. Times pass. You look, you seem to look at them and then you're, you're like, what is happening? Why is this life? Why is there no food? Why is this place empty? It was not that there was no chance for them to have been fruitful. It was that there was a season where fruitfulness was around, but they could not see it. Are you hearing what I'm saying? So he says, this man will not see good when it comes. This can be true if a man likewise cannot discern seasons. If a man cannot discern times. When they say, ah, there are special seasons or special meetings or. Everything to this person is normal. Don't overhype anything for me. Don't fool yourself. Mugu. Actually, people call me Mugu because I said, there is such a thing as laughing in the spirit. Say, ah, it's laughing in the spirit, Mugu, crush them, mercy people. Then I responded to one of them recently. I said, one day, one day, you will need miracle. But my prayer for you is this. May he not be long. And may that day of help not have come. That you have need not have come. Before you realize that there are things that are difficult for common sense to explain. So I know you are tackling me because I'm saying something that does not make common sense. I said, one day, one day, you will need miracle. But my prayer for you is this. May that day that you need miracle, may it not come first. Are you getting the point? Before you know that there are things, common sense cannot explain. Because that logic, they ain't gonna finish you that day. When something is topping your bone. What you need is not common sense. What you need is work hard. We, work hard, is he hard, you want to lay, is he poop, you want to put? The blind guy that just spat on the floor, rubbish. The guy don't blind, you know, man. Make I just see. Make I see. Anything we go to. A man came to me, the prophet, he said, sir, I, I, I want this leprosy to go, he said, no, Allah. Go and bath in a river of mud. Yeah, ah, captain, just leave us on me, do you serve and say, ah, my master? You're not even happy, he said, you go and bath. Shabbi now for you, may you take you. Oh, God, I beg, let's go. Call, lay your own, don't bath. I get what I'm saying? I get what I'm saying? So the point is this. What, you, you want a better twenty four, twenty four, Abi? You want a better new season? That's, that's all. If the Almighty, eh? The one whom you believe can do. If all he says, yeah, just a jumping, eh, front jump, eh. Or he says, between my hair, my shoulder, my, you just redo, he, that's what he wants you to do. Hallelujah. Because indeed, there are times, do you even know that there are places? Amen. There are places. Places where once people go there, you know, Christocentric folks, ah! Yeah, God is not bound to places, ah! God is a meme, I carry God everywhere. How great that was, oh, man of theology. Are you following? It was not in the New Testament, it was from times immemorial. God has always desired a specific location. Where people will meet with him. Are you following? Specific location. And now God appeared himself again to Hannah in Shiloh. By the word of the Lord. Specific location. Jacob slept at Betel. What happened? This is the gate of heaven. This is no other place but the gate of heaven. Hallelujah. Are you following what I'm saying? Jesus goes up on the top of a mountain to pray. What happens? The heavens opened. They saw Elijah, they saw Moses. A voice came from heaven. Jesus was still in his room when the heavens thawed. And then he said, this is my blossom, yeah, he, he was in a pool, being baptized. He, in fact, he did not say, come and baptize me in my house, he went to him to be baptized. There are specific places programmed and potential wise. Have the tendency of making out bust of encounters. Specific places. Hallelujah. Glory to Jesus. Have you learned something tonight? Let's rise up on our feet. Oh, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord 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 Jesus. Thank you. We're praying, and you are praying that in the name of Jesus. I am discerning, like Jesus says. If thou knewest the gift of. The ascetic you give me to drink, he said, you'd have asked of him, living water. I am discerning in this season, in the name of Jesus. I am discerning, I discern this season. I discern this moment. In the name of Jesus, I discern appropriately. By the Spirit of God. By the Spirit of God, I discern. I discern what God is doing, I discern the work of God. In the name of Jesus, I discern his models. Models of raising men. Models of packaging agendas in capsules of time. Models of specific places that are potential for creating out bust of encounters. In the name of Jesus. I discern that God raises men by his spirit. I discern times. I discern that God marks places. Marks them as point of encounters. In the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, as a result, I put away every excuse. That wants to indame me, that wants to limit me, that wants to cut me off. Of the experience that God has proposed. In the name of Jesus. I discern God's intention. In the name of Jesus, I discern his own common intention. Oh, hallelujah. You know, I find it a bit more interesting. When Jesus looked at a lot of places, as a man raised by God. Looked at places where he has gone to. Of course, like God said to Moses, I've heard the crowd, my people, and he has sent him to them. I look at Jesus and. He wasn't everywhere supposedly that God sent him to. That they discern what God has sent him to come and do for them. And he recalled what Jesus said was, oh, thou tire and see though. If the works that had been done in you had been done in Solomon and Gomorrah, they would have returned long ago. So Jesus looks at the places where genuinely he has gone to with a pure intention. To effect the plan and purpose of God for them. The only problem was that if they did anything, they stoned him. They rejected him. What was the problem? They could not discern. They could not discern. And that's why we're going to take that prayer again, in the name of Jesus. I am discerning in this season. I discern the moment, I discern the model you want to walk with. In raising men for us. In the name of Jesus. I discern, I discern, I discern. By the Spirit of God. By reason of the message and the emphasis that you are making. In our local church, I discern what you have prepared us for. I discern what you have prepared us for. In the name of Jesus. I discern the special one that you are prepared, through the local church that I belong to, to be done in my life, through the giftings you are positioned in the church. I discern. I discern that they did not send themselves. I discern that they are not making a bluff, in the name of Jesus. I discern that my pastor is saint of God, for me, for this season. In the name of Jesus, I discern that all that is being said and echoed is not a bluff. I discern that God has sent us a word in this season. I open up my heart, in the name of Jesus. I embrace all the possibilities that are captured within the giftings that you have put within the one you have sent to us, in the name of Jesus. Oh, thank you, Lord Jesus, hallelujah. So actually, Lambano then asked not to do, we take him from God. Yes, because God says, "I have heard their cry, I've seen their problem, I've come to answer them," and how he did it was sending them Moses. "I have heard their cry, I've seen their affliction, how we did it was sending them Gideon." So actually, Lambano was going to be in receiving Moses. Lambano would be in receiving Gideon. Hallelujah. Accepting that all that they have prayed to God for is captured within the faculties that God has made available for Gideon. Accepting that all they have prayed to God for is captured within the giftings that God has enabled Moses with. Hallelujah. Discerning the season, discerning places, discerning men. Hallelujah. Let's give some hints one more time and just give God praise. Father, we thank you because we are discerning, our eyes are open, in the name of Jesus. We do not miss anything, we do not miss any point, any moment, in the name of Jesus. We give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen and amen, hallelujah. Glory to Jesus. I've been blessed at all tonight, as we watch our time, glory, glory. So we're going to be giving our offering as we wrap up the service. Hallelujah. We're going to be giving our offering right now, as we give our offering to the Lord. I mean, wrapping up the service as we give our offering to the Lord. So please generously, cheerfully, as the Lord has made available to you, let's give our offerings to God. Your account number is projected for those watching online, for those of us here. The account number is the same, 7822581253. Please, let's give our offerings to God, hallelujah. And then I want to thank everyone who was a part of the last outreach, the Light Life Campaign that we did on Saturday. God bless you, replenish your strength, but I want you to stay on standby for this week as well. And I also hope that you are, you know, pressing on with all that we said from that Light Life Campaign, that the real work now is in following up on those people and converting them to participants at the special events that are coming. Converting them to special participants is what matters the most now. So I also hope that our personally invite, you know, our mobilization game is on ace, like it's at its topmost gear. You know, I want to encourage as the team, media, as they upload on our social media page, you know, engage, share, repost, you know, tag, use your story, let's spread the word, let's spread the message. You know, a lot of content are still going to go out. We are getting closer and closer by the day, today is 13th, 15 days, just by the way. By tomorrow, it will be exactly 14 days. And you know, there is a whole lot that has been packed in that event for our benefit. So I'm pleading with you by everything that you hold in high esteem. Please, please and please, participate strongly, share, use your platform. I want to beg you, use it aggressively for us. If you have large following, help us get the word out there. Glory to Jesus. But said it that we're looking at a worst attendance of 250, that's at the very worst, 250. The 300, eh, huh, less, you know, something massive, glory to Jesus. And then there are a lot of other things that God is working with us on in the pipeline that will be disclosed, some plans that, you know, have already been earmarked for next year. Trusting God that God will open more door finances to you, because I said that as I was preaching, you know, that a generation can actually be looking forward to, oh God, eh, send us light, send us light, you know. And all that God needs to do is actually to raise an agent of light who would not mind putting his money where his faith is. In other words, some people receiving the light in places where there is darkness today is at the mercy of the resources that God will bring to some of us, which we will now use to take the gospel to some places. For example, they are eagerly waiting in UK for a time that was saying that, okay, we're coming, want to have a two days meeting with you. And then after those two days, S Church UK inauguration straight. You know, they are eagerly waiting. On this, this week, I posted the timeline of plan for next year, I posted it on the pastors group. I omitted S Church Canada in the plan. Somebody copied it, put S Church Canada, let's trust God. Some people are just getting fat and the weather is cold here. I said, "Okay, no problem." Me, I said Lagos, at least, because there are people there, very many self, you know, Lagos, UK. The person copied it and said, "Pastor, you omitted S Church Canada." There's nothing God cannot, I said, "Yes, there's nothing can't." So you know, even some people said, "Their faith is stronger than mine." Nah, ah, ah, we must all reduce and remove S Church Canada. I would gather, so there are a lot of plans in the pipeline. And then of course, S Church Abelluta as well, there is plans in the pipeline. That plan is actually such that when God eventually does it, it is to stop us from packing and moving to having a place that is going to be permanent. You know, so that you can just know that it's not like a plan that we're oblivious to. It is something we are praying in and eagerly believing God for. And I cannot wait to share for you the breaking news of that, when it is eventually consummated. Glory together, glory to Jesus. And then of course, it's not going to be something that, you know, we'll just come and say, yes, it is. No, you will be a part of it though, in Jesus' name. I guess, your money will be part of what will be used. Abba, see people now, I said, "Your money will be part." Ah, your money will be part. Yes. So as you pray, as you believe and, you know, form an expectation, these are some of the things that should also get into your expectation. Praying for S Church Abelluta, God in the name of Jesus, in 2024, S Church Abelluta is moving to our home facility, where we will stop packing and moving and, you know, all of this. Somebody's already tapping on chicken. Somebody's already tapping on chicken. So some people, some people are tired of carrying speaker. I don't know about that, S Church, I bet. Listen, let me tell you, what you want to do with the next in S Church, the first question on the form now is, "Where are you from?" "Where is your family house?" That's the number one question. So if you tell us your location. Amen. Chair of folks.